Good evening. Today is Tuesday, March 19th at 6:00. And this is a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Trinidad. And it is also the first day of spring. So would you all still please stand for the allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold call please. Devono?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Schu?
Here.
Berman?
Here.
Ogletree?
Here.
Trigell?
Here.
Frigo?
Here.
Item number two, approval of the agenda. I need a Martian to approve the agenda, the statement.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote please. Trigell?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Devono?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Frigo? Yes. Item number three, policy items and staff records. Do we have any? Not today, Mayor, thank you. Okay. Item number four, petitions or communications all written. This is the public section to voice any improvements. Five minutes. Dan Lazzetti?
Good evening, Mayor Council. Happy Spring. I'm here this evening for probably the last three, three and a half weeks. I've been asking some questions, sending emails, having meetings. And I haven't had a answer on many of them. One of them, Central Park project. So I thought I'd look into it myself and give the public a report on how the park's going. I did ask for records from City Hall. And powers above said, told the employees that they're not allowed to speak to me. If I want any records, I have to go through the Open Record Act, which no problem, I did. So here's a report on Central Park, on what's going on. The contract was signed beginning date October 2nd. Completion date was supposed to be February 29th. They did get eight snow days in that period of time. They were told in the contract, the way the contract reads, after 150 days, contractor will be charged $750 for not finishing the project a day. Which at the last council meeting, the contractor was here saying he was ahead of schedule. Well, and I know some of you have been looking into this. It's not even halfway done, and we're into March. So how could he be ahead of schedule? Well, I'll tell you now. If you remember at the beginning, I told you this job couldn't be done in 150 days, and there was going to be some change orders? Well, there's 14 change orders in this job. Looking at them, four of them are legit, stuff they couldn't see that should be charged for. They did add on a bunch of projects in this job, which I'm not sure how you could do this, because few of them, I'll go over them here in a minute if I got time, are over $10,000. I don't know how you could give contractors something else to do. Well, first of all, I thought that had to be approved through council spending that money, which I might be wrong, I don't know. But you're giving a contractor more work than he hasn't even finished the first part, and adding days onto the project. Out of these 14 add-ons, he received 116 extra days to do $278,000 worth of the extra work. Okay? 116 days to do $300,000, 150 days to do 1.2 million dollars. Something's not right there, one way or the other. I mean, common sense tells you this. A couple of these I'm going to go through. First one, these should have been in the project to begin with, before added on. They should have been in the plans to begin with. A couple of them were errors in the project, which I stated they were in there. First one is doors on the announcer's booth. Everybody knows they need the doors. They're putting two doors, they're probably seven foot by five foot. They're $10,000, oh, $11,000 for these two doors, and five days to put them in. Next one is a sink in the concession stand and water heater. I don't know what kind of sink it is, but it's $20,000, five days to put in a sink and water heater. Next one is ADA on the upper restroom, which that's in the project itself. $41,000, if you look into what they're doing, $10,000 probably ADA. The rest is cosmetic, has nothing to do with ADA. And the big one is LED lights. $66,000 for LED lights, 25 days to screw in a light bulb. And by the way, the bathroom, they gave them 35 days on the restroom, to do the restroom work.
Mr. Lazzetti, 30 seconds. I'm sorry, should have told you in one minute.
Well, you know, and that's just something to look into. And I want the people to trend out to know what's going on over there. And since I only have 30 seconds, I want to commend the mayor today. The mayor, or the police department had a deal on Armor Vest 616. And she was the only one from the city there. No one from City Hall, no representatives. And that's that. I want to commend you. Thank you for being there, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Mayor, if I could please, I believe we have a number of people on line who are asking to be allowed to speak.
Okay, before we go on, I've been looking at the monitor. And I can't read the name there, but there's some suspicious pictures that come up. So maybe we should check it, make sure.
Yeah, we can maybe check.
Our link is, uh...
Secure.
Secure, yes. There were a pair of legs there that I don't think should have been, so.
Okay.
Did you see it?
No.
Mr. Mayor, or sorry, Ms. Mayor, members of the council, we can read the names and acknowledge them. So the first person who we have on our list is Chad Bastwell.
Bastwell?
Bastwell, B-A-S-T-E-W-E-L-L.
Okay, and he's going to speak?
Yeah, I think we'll give each participant online five minutes to...
Hi, Council, Chad Bastwell here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Is it time for public comment, or?
Yes. You're on, you have five minutes. You will be prompted when there is one minute left.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
I said you will be prompted by Mr. Downs when you have one minute left.
Okay, and how many minutes do I have?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, okay. Well, thank you, Council. Thank you for having this meeting tonight, having public comment. Yeah, I just, I'd like to address public safety. Public safety is a concern for everybody in our city. I think it's something we can all agree on, no matter which side of the political spectrum you find yourselves. You know, it appears that we have a problem in the sewers in the city. And I would like the council to please, please draft and pass a resolution tonight, because this is a very serious situation. A resolution that prevents hook-nosed rabbit-like creatures from stealing our children and taking them into the sewers in the city.
Cutting off.
National news recently revealed that these creatures...
Okay, that mine is in her book.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else online?
We have Mitzi, last name is B-E-P-E. I'm not sure exactly how to pronounce that.
Okay.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you well. You have five minutes.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. My name is Mitzi Bepay. My goodness. I want to talk today about a nonprofit that I worked for called the AWG. We worked to help give antivirals to people who really need them. A lot of the people that we see are pretty trafficked. And, but recently, there's been a change. And I really just wanted to bring some awareness to this, because I don't feel as though enough people are talking about this or even aware this is happening. But recently, we've had an increase of children needing our services. And I find that really scary. I mean, for decades almost, working for this company, most people that I saw were in their mid-30s. And now I'm seeing children, I mean, under 10, who have herpes and AIDS. And I think that we're living in this epidemic, and we're not addressing our real issues. And there are a lot. One thing that I think needs to be addressed more often is the fact that, well, I, unfortunately, I have 10 different boys, all of which are under the age of puberty, who all actually got AIDS from the same place. It was from this interesting and quite scary religious practice.
Okay, is there a problem?
Mayor Council, I would yield to you all, to your meeting, your council rules. I'm not sure we recognize any of the callers on here, but we can also encourage them to submit written comments to you all. Just obviously, our meeting's being a little hijacked. And I would recommend that we just pass online of the comment. And encourage anybody who wants to submit a legitimate concern to you all, they can work throughout our, Garrett, our city clerk, send that information over.
Yes.
And we want to err on the side of allowing people to make comment on this little council meeting. But this could get even more dismembering.
There's somebody that has raised hand. Is it a name we recognize?
We have Wyatt Prower, Tazax, and Gabe Strutman, who have all raised their hands.
And there are a lot of people who are now raising their hands, I guess after hearing the last people. So I would recommend we just stop it and move on with this.
I've never had this happen before.
Right.
Is there a vote we have to take?
No, no vote. We may want to trust it.
Fuck niggas, white power, goddammit. Sincere!
Our kids are raping children. You fucking boomers, you're saying they're cutting off people's future. Try to play about...
I've heard you before, you do that.
Maybe we should cut the online.
Try to play about juice sucking baby pees. It's just a pile of shit.
Yeah, Mayor Council, probably what's going on is, you know, there are First Amendment auditors who are likely to file, you know, maybe a complaint about civil or First Amendment rights violations. But I think your council rules say that you have to come in person and sign up. We'll verify that.
Well, unfortunately, this isn't the first time we had that happen.
That's fine.
We had it during COVID, yeah.
Right, okay.
Yes, so...
Did you just stop the...
What data is on this?
Jim, stop the online meeting. I don't know that there's any rule that requires us to have the online meeting. It is being streamed and broadcast on YouTube.
All right, thank you, thank you. Item five, consent agenda approval. Item 5A, approval of the... Oh, sorry. I got lost, I forgot about... Hook-nosed fish in this area. Item 4A, executive session for a conference with the city's attorneys for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal advice on specific legal questions under CSR Section 24-6-402 or 0. Legal advice pertaining to event planning. Is there a motion to go on the executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote please. Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Trigell?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Devono?
Yes.
Frigo?
Yes.
Now, Kelly will confer in the conference room.
Okay.
The time is now six fifty-six and the executive session has concluded. The participants in the executive session were started with Mr.
Aaron Williamson.
Nathan Thurman.
Daniel Trishel.
Karen Greco.
Eli DeBono.
Erin Ogletree.
Kelsey French Chu, who's just coming back.
Yes.
Lustens and Stephen Stever.
For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meeting law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, go back to the regular agenda item, which is item five, the consent agenda approval, five A, is approval of the regular reading minutes of March fifth, twenty twenty-four, approval of bills in the amount of one million, two hundred forty-seven thousand, four hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents, and it pays us current till March fifteenth, approval of payroll, March second through March fifteenth, and March sixteenth through March twenty-ninth, in the total of four hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred forty-seven dollars and sixteen cents. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Ogletree? Yes. Williamson?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trishel?
Yes.
DeBono?
Yes.
Greco?
Yes. Item six, public recarrying, we have none. Item seven, unfinished business, we have none. Item eight A, under miscellaneous business, item eight A is authorized additional expenditure for work on the landfill compactor, an extra sixty thousand, ninety-nine dollars and forty-eight cents, and the total bill comes to three hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. And Mr. Justice going to present.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council.
Good evening.
Back in November, we brought to you the first fee of two hundred seventy-one thousand, six hundred eighty-five, seventy-four to rebuild, and that was an estimate to rebuild the compactor. After they completely tore it down, they found some additional issues that amounts to the additional sixty thousand, sixty thousand, ninety-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. Part of the biggest one was the ring and pinion and the carrier housing, that was a thirty thousand dollar part of that, and then the two main pivot joints had to be completely rebuilt with a machine pivots, and there was a few miscellaneous other. If you look at the backup, that cost came to ninety-three thousand, four hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. They basically give us a discount to wrap with the sixty thousand, literally sixty thousand dollar price. Any questions?
The only question I had that says that this is going to come out of the general fund, is there any issue that that's going to hurt some other project, or is this just basically something that we have to do?
That would be a question for Cheryl, I don't think so. Mr. Ritter, you got it?
Mr. Mayor, sorry, Ms. Mayor, it's been a night. Members of the council, I believe this comes out of our capital line item, which we have money to cover this expenditure on, but we will verify that with Ms. Ms. Albert.
Okay, that's another question.
Mr. Shu? Mr. Treehouse?
I may have addressed this previously when you first did it, but the warranty, so what is, how long is that warranty?
It's three years, five thousand hours, it's the same as a brand-new machine warranty. Basically, we're going to have a brand-new machine about half the price of whatever the machine costs.
And that's all the work that they're doing, or is that?
That's it.
Everything?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So basically, Bob, this is a zero-hour rebuild, I mean, it'd be considered zero hour.
That's correct.
So is that?
The valve meter back to zero.
Okay, so is that the entire machine, or only the components?
It's basically, pretty much the entire machine, we can do a full cap restoration on it, we'll just call it minor cap.
So powertrain chassis, that's all zero hour?
Powertrain, order.
Yeah. I have some experience dealing with the same company at work, and I think you guys have done a good job, and I mean, obviously, the components, as you mentioned there, they're exceptionally expensive, so we'll still have a good machine for significantly less, so thank you.
No further questions?
Okay, I thought the warranty was five years, did I read it somewhere, or did I just misunderstand?
I'm pretty sure it's three years, five thousand hours.
Okay, okay, but is the machine turned out, or is it tore down?
They're in the process of assembling it as we speak. Hopefully, we'll have it here in the next weeks.
I have no questions. Okay, item eight A, call the vote, please, for the additional expenditure. Oh, I need a motion?
Okay.
I'll second.
Call the vote?
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trishel?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
DeBono?
Yes.
Greco? Yes.
I have a question, Steve. We need to give a share, we keep taking money out of our capital improvements and that, and some of our projects, and then short, we need to kind of work on that, get an update on that, I think.
Yeah, and Mayor, Council, the projects we have currently are all under committed money that you've already authorized, but I think that's a good idea, we'll plan to get Cheryl and Burnview soon to do a summary of where we're at on capital, so you guys can get all of that information.
And she was on here, I don't mean to speak out of turn, but she was on before we turned off, yeah. Yeah, sure, sure, thank you.
Okay, item eight B, resolution authorizing application for an EIAF grant for the water tank, we have budget, Mr. Lisbon?
How are you? Good.
Good evening.
Evening, Mayor, Council. And maybe, is the resolution for our application to DOLA for the Energy Mineral Impact Assistance Fund, right? We would be requesting one million dollars from DOLA, the match would come from previously allocated ARPA funds, and then this is in addition to the CDKHE State Revolving Loan Fund that we discussed in September. So this would reduce the amount that would need to be paid back over a twenty-year loan.
My question is, how much is the match?
One million.
Okay, and is this the money that we set aside for the pool, or is that gone already?
This is the money that was set aside for the water tank rehab, it's re-appropriated from the Pravdand Initiative.
Oh, okay, all right, good.
Yeah, yeah, it's not the pool.
No more questions? No? No questions?
No.
I have no questions, pass.
I have no questions either, thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing application for EIAF grant for the water tank rehab project?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote?
Williamson?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trishel?
Yes.
DeBono?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Greco?
Yes. Item eight C, consideration of amended housing now funding agreement with Mount Carmel Wellness and Community Center for the Holy Asses Trinity. Is that correct?
Trinity.
Trinity, that's what I thought. School project.
This was to be presented by Michael Yermin, but.
I have Michael Yermin on the phone, in case there's questions on him, but thank you, Felita, for filling in.
Yeah, so the only change that we're requesting, the only amendment to this agreement is to change the grant request from Strong Communities, which we already applied for and heard back from DOLA, their suggestion is to apply for the next grant, item eight D. So this is, needs to be approved before we can ask Council to approve the application, so this is the agreement with Mount Carmel to include the EIAF More Housing Now Land Use Initiative in addition to the Strong Communities ask.
Thanks, Felita, Michael, did you have anything to add on top of that?
Nope, I can answer any questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, do you have any questions?
What specific, for the public record, what specific work is this going to cover if it is granted?
So the new grant, the EIAF More Housing Now Land Use Initiative, is for publicly-owned utilities, so the request that we put in was the utility work and the roadway on Church and Convent, as well as some site development, for a total ask of three point eight four million. DOLA and Department of Housing said that there were too many requests for Strong Communities, so we are now looking to split that ask into utility work and roadway work, so this new grant, this EIAF More Housing Now Land Use Initiative, would be just for the roadway, so publicly-owned utilities, so on Church Street from Animist Commercial and Convent, because they're doing the tourney work under there, replacing the names for Holy Trinity, so dependent on the grants. And so this would include roadway, so it's curbed gutter, sidewalk, and brick, and that's still here too, so.
So that'll be right away to right away, and then all EDA concerns will be addressed, and it basically is going to be like the full workout of First Street, but in one cycle.
Yeah, and so the difference is, First Street was one project, the utilities and the roadway, and because of the way that Strong Communities is ARPA-funded, they have a strict deadline for use of funds, and this DOLA grant that we're requesting has a longer timeline for use of funds, so this would be later phases of the project, the roadway on top, versus Strong Communities keep that utility work within that application.
Okay, I have no further questions, thank you.
Nathan?
Yeah, so this is just work, has nothing to do with the structure of the building?
This grant does not.
Okay, and does this, do we match any of that with that grant, is that a million on that particular?
So the grant match for this program is twenty-five percent, and so the match for the Strong Communities ask was twenty percent, our original match that has been allocated both from the city and from Mount Carmel was nine hundred sixty thousand for the original full. was 960,000 for the original full project. And so now that it's being split utilities versus roadway, that that match still covers it.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, yeah, the match is under, the required match is under the previously allocated match. Have I said that right?
And Mayor, Council, Michael can speak to this a little bit, too. Being at a 25% match is, you know, better than not. That means 75% of the project we paid for, there is the possibility, Michael can explain this better than I can, that, you know, we may have opportunities to do a little additional work. But funding that at a 25% match is better than paying for it outright. So we would have conversations with you all in the future on that. Michael, you can certainly correct me if I'm wrong on that.
So we did take a look, we did take a look today at the scope of the project to ensure that, like Church Street and Convent Street, because the utility work and the main replacements, we obviously want to replace anywhere that's disturbed, and as well as trying to ensure that, as you know, street is ADA compliant from one block, one end of the block to the other. So we did take a look at the scope of work that we submitted on the strong communities to ensure that the entire, the entire block where the water main is going from Commercial all the way back down to the library there is covered, and it is. So we don't anticipate any additional changes to the scope of work. However, we are, under the new grant, more housing now, under the threshold amount for what we're allowed to ask for. So if there are additional things that are identified, we could potentially look at increasing our ask on the roadways, i.e. if we wanted to add additional sidewalks, et cetera, to the scope of the project. But after looking at it again with a little bit closer with the staff, after we kind of had a staff meeting today, we determined that the current scope of work covers the entire project area. So I don't think we really need to amend the amounts from the strong communities.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, May, do you have any questions?
No, I asked her. I don't have any questions. Just for clarification, is just Bob doing the engineering part of this? Can you come up here for a minute? I'd like to get clarified on exactly what kind of work they're doing on Church and Convent. Because we had some questions there. Are you doing the brick, are this going to be brick work all the way from where Commercial is all the way to Animus?
All the way to Animus.
What about where Church Street comes down? How far up are you going? Because that's a bad area right there.
Yes, we're going to try and take it, Mark wants to replace the water main in Convent. So when we tear into that water main, we'll probably be redoing the majority of Convent all the way down to Plum. There's, I don't know if you know where that concrete ties to pass the rectory.
Yeah, so what about the sidewalks in there?
Well, as you know, we, there was a project that was done on the south side of Church Street. That sidewalk is all brand-new.
Right, yeah, that...
We're going to, we'll leave that alone. But yes, the sidewalks on the, everything, ADA ramps, it's all in front of the old school is all being replaced. We get the library a few years ago, we'll pick up from where we left off and head down.
What about, you know, where across from the school there, the sidewalk is, that's going to be, are you going to narrow that on?
On Convent or Church Street?
On Convent.
Narrow the sidewalk or narrow the street?
Well, it's going to be pretty narrow if you're going to redo all the curb and gutter.
Yeah.
I mean, that street's really narrow as it is.
Correct, we don't have a lot of right-of-way there. So we pretty much got to go back in with the same street width that we got.
And that curb and gutter is going to go higher because it's a, it's a barrier?
It's a high curve now. We would like the Lord, that's our goal, to create these high curves.
Right. And then on Convent Street itself, on the corner there, are you going to extend that out in? To make it, I mean, you know, where you make the corner there? Where you got to extend out on this, where the church, I mean, where the school is? To the church size is what I'm saying, is it's really...
Narrow there as well.
And is it going to be ADA acceptable?
Yeah, ADA has got to be a minimum of four feet. So, yeah, any infrastructure we do, we have to make sure it's ADA.
Yeah, because I just want, it's really kind of narrow right there. And it's just bad area right there. It's almost, you need a one-way street there.
Well, definitely, we've talked about no parking, you know?
Nobody pays attention to that.
No, I know. It needs to be posted. And since there's not really a curb now, a couple of inches of people run up on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
It's tough, especially when they have funerals.
Yeah, it's really, a lot of stuff that you don't get in there in mornings either, too. You know, because people don't redesign, they just park right there on that curb. And it's tough to make the corner there, especially when you have... And what about truck transportation? Are we going to cut that off? Because those semis come down there and tear that road up. I mean, there's got to be some way to prevent that.
I'm not sure, I know that, you're right. When you deliver to the main tallies, always a beer truck there. So I...
I mean, there has to be a lot of blocking it.
I don't know, but I don't know if you can tell. Probably better bring that beer truck down Convent than it is to stop it down Middle East Street. So I don't say you can cut somebody's delivery truck off.
What happens is we have emergency there.
Well...
I mean, that's a big issue there, too.
And just as a reminder, currently, we're talking about the Housing Now Agreement, but we have a Mount Carmel, just adding the words, and More Housing Now Land Use Initiative to that agreement.
Do you have a question?
Bobby, after, oh, this is a good time, but the timeframe, are you looking at? You can't even...
You know, we're looking to go out to design on this one, we're not going to do it in-house. So the grant's got the designing fees.
And the October 2026 is the ARPA deadline for the use of strong communities.
Thank you. So, yeah, basically, we go out to design as soon as possible and get ready to pick it up.
We hear back about this grant in July. We have that contract by this October.
Got you.
I just want to say thank you, Ms. Gillespie and Mr. Thurman, because it's your guidance through all this that gets us this money to do these things that really need to be done. And so I just, that's all.
I think it's real smart, take advantage of that, the 25% match.
Mm-hmm, and 75%.
It's a lot, especially if construction costs today. And it leads right into City Hall, you know, so have that all. Have First Street down, we have the next street, north of Main Street down, so. Follow the yellow ring road?
Not none.
I have no questions, and I also thank you for your presentation, it was pretty clear, and it's appreciated.
Mayor, Council, if I may just make a couple of comments. So I think at a future work session, we'll bring the proposed design and what we're going for, so you all can have that conversation, understand what we're going for. But I do want to thank, you know, the late Jake Camino and his team for bringing this forth. Church Street really wasn't on our radar as a capital project, but I think it ties in very well with what we're planning for our Riverwalk and our downtown rehabilitation in general. So this grant is the perfect opportunity to identify this project for capital improvement for our community, and in turn, support a new housing development, which we're hoping to see come to fruition and revitalize the use of the historic building. So thank you for vetting this tonight, and I think this is a very solid grant, and I would anticipate we'll score quite high on the application. In part, to your point, thanks to Michael and Talitha for their hard work.
And the match specifically is $300,000 from the city, $200,000 from the housing now, and $100,000 from the project overall. The rest of them are from Mount Carmel.
Call for the vote for the support of the resolution? Oh, I'm sorry, that's what I meant. Call for the motion.
Second.
Call the vote, please. Devono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trillo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Creago? Yes. Item eight B, 420 festival planning discussion.
Oh, sorry, we have one more.
Yeah, it's confusing because we did have to approve the agreement with Mount Carmel before we could approve the resolution for the application. Same project, two separate, separate paperwork.
Okay, all right, this is item eighteen?
Yes.
Yes. Call for the motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
New discussion. I'm doing this bit.
Excuse me. Mr. Yermin had a way that he wanted the motion read, so do you want us to do that?
Yes. A resolution supporting the submission of the More Housing Now and Land Use Initiative Grant Application to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. I'll start over again. Do I have a motion in support of that resolution?
I think that's the one, I think that's eight C.
Is it? I thought we did eight C already.
Yes, I'm on eight D, and it's...
Because the city's agreement is housing now, and DOLA's grant is more housing now and land use initiative. So understandably confusing.
It's kind of confusing.
It is.
Okay. So call for the vote.
Could I just say, I mean, I think, and I hope I'm helping, but the proposal from Mr. Yermin is, quote, "The resolution of support for the DOLA More Housing Now grant and to approve the amended funding agreement with MCWCC." So that, did I get that? Yes, those two items that are on our agenda are...
Michael, is that correct?
Yeah, I, so there's just, we just need to ensure, according to the state, that the, that we, because we're really required to submit the new funding agreement, we just need to ensure there was a motion to also approve the funding agreement between the city and Mount Carmel. And all of the resolutions for, which I think was the first motion.
Okay, are we on C or D?
We are on D.
Okay.
And what I would recommend is having the motioner and the seconder rescind the original motion, and just have it restated with a motion and a second, just so we're crystal clear on that.
Okay, we want to rescind the original motion?
We consented to the motioner and the seconder.
I rescind if I made the motion.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Now we vote on rescinding the motion?
No, you don't need to vote on that, the person seconder approved that. Now we need a new...
Then we need a new motion?
With the language specified.
For a resolution supporting the submission of the More Housing Now and Land Use Initiative Grant Applications to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. That's eight D. That's actually the verbiage of the resolution, so, correct? Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trillo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Devono?
Yes.
Creago? Yes. Item eight D, 420 festival planning discussion. Thank you, Talitha. Thank you, Mr. Justice.
So Mayor and members of council, if I can, please, I want to say publicly what I am proposing and what kind of leads this item to be before you. And that is, as you were aware, there was a plan for a 420 event whereby the local marijuana industry would be having a gathering where they would be, all the participating marijuana stores would be having an event where they would advertise their wares, give coupons, do things of that nature, so that people could go to their stores and buy marijuana. Basically, it's a chance for them to promote their businesses and what they sell. They would then, it is, it would be the hope of the marijuana industry, and people who purchase marijuana at the facilities would, well, just that they would purchase. And then if they were of such a mind, they could go back to the event and consume marijuana. And it would be an area where they would be allowed to consume marijuana. It was originally planned that this event was going to be at the golf course. There were a number of reasons why, excuse me, why that was being suggested, but that was the original plan. And having that, a meeting of city staff and marijuana industry representatives, and then representatives from the Marijuana Enforcement Division of the State of Colorado, and also liquor enforcement, the liquor enforcement division of the state, we were told that would not, that consumption of marijuana is never allowable on a liquor licensed premises. It is always illegal and would cause the person who's the holder of the liquor license to get in trouble if they were to allow consumption of marijuana. So the golf course was no longer a viable location for this event. So in this meeting, it was suggested and proposed that this event be at Central Park. And as had been discussed during this meeting, it would be essentially an event whereby the marijuana industry and LLC that has been formed by Jack and Diane Brisbane, who have been the contact people and also the ones responsible for producing this event. Jack and Diane Brisbane would be getting a special events permit, but would be responsible for insurance, private security, and basically just being responsible for the overall production and presentation of the event. So I wanted to make sure that you all knew about that right away, as soon as that conversation was had. I don't want to talk about any, you know, confidential communications that have been held and things of that nature, but I wanted you to know right away that there was a proposed change in location. And I would just say, and I'm about done with my remarks, it's my request that you all have a conversation about this. It's not an action item on the agenda. So what I am asking, I just have a few more things to say. What I would have said, what I'm asking is that you guys, you all, please have a discussion about this, and that you state your, just you state your preferences of whether or not this event happened. Okay, it's not, it's not an up or down vote, because it's not an action item on the agenda. But in the past, the, you know, the indication, I believe there have been affirmative votes by council, at least in theory, that resulted in a four-three vote. That is, four of you supporting the idea of having at least, you know, conceptually, a 420 event, and three of you being opposed. I just want to say lastly, and I know you're going to have other questions and comments as you discuss, but that the marijuana consumption that would be going on would be in a tent towards the back of Central Park and out of public view. I don't want to be in any way accused of being disingenuous or suggesting that there would not be marijuana consumption. So I've said enough, I hope I've covered everything, but you can obviously ask questions of myself or no other staff, but that is... of myself or, you know, other staff, but that is.
Berman?
You know, when this was happening at the golf course, through a special permitting process, we obviously didn't have to weigh in on it. Now that it's in a park, I am not in favor of a public property being used for that, and I, I don't think that in any way goes against how I voted on several recent events. So for me, I'm not in favor of using a public park on there.
Neiman?
I'm in favor of a public park. I'm in favor of it because initially I thought we were going to do a five-one, get one free with the golf course, being that we need to come to the golf course and bring the people out, two thousand strong, to come onto the golf course and sit at the golf course, and then boost the marijuana economy by having people come out. So I thought we were getting the two-for-one, but since we're not, I'm in favor of having it at the park, maybe we can still get that number to get to two thousand some kind of way and work out the kinks if we come up on some kinks for this first event. I mean, the first one's going to have some great stuff, for sure. But let's get that one nailed in, and then we can address the other kinks for the second one, if we need to set that.
Mr. Berman?
I'm in favor.
This one's a complicated one, but, so, being the way the plan is planned out, I really would like to see a lot more discussion on, on privacy for that area. I am in favor with stipulations of privacy, meaning maybe barriers, something a little bit more, more security than what's opposed.
Yeah, I'm not in favor at all. Central Park was made for kids, it was for people, baseball games and soccer, not for smoking marijuana, so I'm definitely opposed to it.
Eli?
I, I like the original idea, the conceptual idea of having it at the golf course to begin with, I think that was okay. That's not going to materialize, and I like the idea of promoting to help the marijuana industry, but this may sound a little contradictory, but I don't like the idea of having it at a public park.
I think marijuana industry has done such a great amount of work in this community. I think that it has, obviously has revitalized business buildings downtown, it's brought people here from other places, including people like Ms. Gillespie, and many, many others who have made our lives better for them. And not to speak of everything that we have used marijuana industry, sales tax revenue to support so many things. And I think this community has a lot of, I've always felt like it has a lot of ambivalence sometimes about marijuana, and I'm not really sure what that's about, because I have not seen ill effects, never learned that they just haven't materialized. There have been very, very few instances where there's been an issue of anyone involved in that industry violating anything. They've been utterly careful to stay within the lines, and I, I think they deserve support and, and a way to be more, be more visible to this community. And so because of that, I think that festival is a good idea. I think the things that call my concerns about where it's planned to be are that this is not an event that the city's sponsoring, this is a private event, and we, they, I understand that they've been very willing to listen to everything that we have asked of them to do, and the Marijuana Enforcement Division is going to be present. So they are the entity in this state that enforces law around marijuana. So if there's any concern, they're aware of it, they have not given us any cause to think that the plan that this LLC has is a problem for them. So because I've had a chance to sort all that out, I'm supportive of it.
Thank you. I pretty much agree with, with Aaron's view. You know, I, I, I look at the crime reports all the time, and I've asked police officers when Chief Gloriosa was there, so what kind of issues do you have with people who consume marijuana? He said, "We have none." And so I don't think it's a detriment. I think there's a veil of secrecy of, I don't know, old-fashioned ideas about marijuana, but the onus is on the medical, I'm sorry, on the marijuana industry itself. And so this is a do or die, not a do or die, but it's up to them to make this, this event successful. And I think we owe it to them to do that. And for that reason, I, I agree that we need to proceed. I would like to have some more information from Mr. and Mrs. Brisbane, is it?
Yeah.
And kind of give, you know, we've had detail, but not a lot of good detail, and I think it would be nice if, if that's possible.
And I think I understand the concerns of both yours, mayor, and also council in Trinidale, I understand those. So we will, we will ask them to, you know, answer those questions and address those concerns. Could I please ask, just as a member of clarification council in Trinidale, were you a yes, but I want more information?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't want to mischaracterize your viewpoint, so I, I think I do understand that information, and we will get you, including the advertising. You want to know about where exactly it's being advertised, and I understand that, and Steve might have your direction, so.
So by my count, it's approval, four, against three?
Yes, there is a majority that is in favor, that's correct, yes.
The consensus is that we move forward.
Yes, ma'am. That's my understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Aaron, do you have any, the council reports, item nine?
I have no reports.
Neiman?
No reports, we have a meeting I want to say tomorrow. I have the pleasure of sitting down with the Hispanic chamber and kind of working through it, organizing, helping organize, since we're at my own festival. So it looks like this year is going to be a pretty good season, we're going to have quite a few bands, a P-2 contest, every shop's singing board, who are willing to actually participate, help and sponsor, which is really great to hear that. When you get that yes, that it sounds like it's a great idea, so we're hoping to move forward with that and make this a great event for the board. I'm hoping to get them here to present their actual presentation, to kind of go through and let us know exactly the list of events and the timeline. So hopefully that'll be soon. Thank you very much for letting me do all this, so it's really been fun. We still got a long ways to go. And that's pretty much all.
Thank you.
Do I have another question? The Los Angeles County Veterans Council, they're applying for a $50,000 historic preservation grant for the next phase of their construction and rehabilitation for Wooton and Hallway Hall, windows, roof, foundation, and et cetera. So hopefully that comes to fruition. And on Wednesday, March 27, from eight to five, at the, oh, Champions Building on Commercial Street, the Veterans of Optometry Partnerships of America, they're sponsoring free eye glass, or eye exams for all veterans, and that's going to be Wednesday, March 27, from eight to five.
Thank you. I think I'm better, I'm too better than I was.
I went to the Trinidad Golf Association meeting, and it was last Wednesday night, and it's moving along. We're having good conversations, and they have some significant issues with a couple of the greens, but they, I learned today that they have worked out how they're going to get those greens fixed up so that their season can begin. So it's going really well. I, I think it helps them that someone from us is there and is listening to their concerns and wants to work with them. So I think it's going well. I went to the Arts and Culture Commission today, and they are putting out an RFP in April for a sculpture that is to go somewhere at the renovated Ball Field, which I think we really would. And then we were on the Brownfield Grant thing, and we learned a little bit more what home eternity is going to be like, and that was good.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay, I got a few myself. What was that?
Why you say anything? I tell you, if I tell you anything.
Thank God you're here, you're keeping straight. Okay, on March 13, there was a meeting down at the Hilton Garden Inn, and it was the Phil Long Enterprises, it wasn't the Phil Long Enterprises, I'm sorry, because they've heard the rumors that we've all been hearing too about what's going to happen, to the projects that the Kip Hampton and all the ancillary companies that are doing all the work in Trinidad, what's going to happen. And the strong message to all of us is they're staying on course. So everybody from their private enterprises, all the dealerships, all, everybody that works in every aspect of Phil Long Enterprises were there, and we got it from Mr. Shaughnessy and Gina Chino herself, that the projects that you see going on in Trinidad now will continue. So that was a huge relief for me. On the 15th, I, I did a virtual CML policy meeting, and for those of you who are not familiar, the, the policy committee goes through all the legislation that's being presented at the State House, and we have an option to approve, support, oppose, or neutral. So there's a lot of, and it's a very long meeting for those of you who've been there. It's, it's quite a long meeting, but I, I have a confession, I didn't stay to the end, but it was two hours, and I just couldn't, I couldn't devote any more time, and I apologize for that. But a couple of the things that they are, that they brought up, that I thought was of interest to Trinidad especially, is they're starting a middle-income tax credit. It's going to be a pilot project, so it's actually almost Housing Now initiative, but for people that are making between eighty and hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. And the reason they're doing that in some of the big metro areas or the ski areas, where housing is outrageous, they're going to try to mitigate some of the issues they've had there. But I think it might somewhere along the line. And when we were staying neutral on, and it was very controversial during the meeting, was they're trying to ban firearms in sensitive areas, that the delineation of what a sensitive area was, wasn't, wasn't really defined, so we're, we're just going to let that go. And there's another one on prom restraints, they want to ban prom restraints with law enforcement, and we were neutral on that one one way or the other. So that's just a key highlights of that. I don't want to go on and on and bore you again. But it's interesting.
You're joking about your predecessor? Just kidding.
It's Zinger Night at City Council. On March 15, Steve and I participated in a virtual meeting with History Colorado, and there's two things that are going on with History Colorado that I think is very, very important to Trinidad. One of them is the school project that we just talked about. The question is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Rupert, but the question is, is that one building or two? Is the convent one building and the school another? Because it impacts the amount of grant money we get. So the board members from, Don DePrince, and I didn't, I couldn't get the other individuals' names, but they are going to be in Trinidad on April 6 in conjunction with the issues that we have with the Bloom and Baca House museums. If you all know that those museums have been neglected immensely, and through the help of a group of individuals in Trinidad, and Ty Winner, Representative Ty Winner, brought this issue to the forefront. So they're coming down here to talk to us about that. But while they're down here, Mr. Prince has promised us that she is going to tour the, the school project as well. So I think that would, if, and if, I left two flyers out there, if any of you have places of prominence, you can put those flyers. And the other one is the Temple Iron, the ceremony for landmarking of Temple Iron, but the other one is on the History Colorado. So I think that's really important. And I attended today the S.H.I.E.L.D. six-one-six presentation. I think it's just a preliminary. I talked to Detective Lay, and we started mulling around some ideas we can have to promote it, to give that extra armor for our police department. I think there's 24 of this that are coming to Trinidad, and they want to raise almost sixty-five thousand dollars, so. And while I was there, I, I got a chance to be at the PD and talk to, to some of the officers, and it's, it was an eye-opening experience for me, because a lot of action was going on. I'm not privy to say what, but I was right in the thick of it. It's, it makes you think as a citizen, what the men and women of our police department do for us, and it was, I actually, my hair on my, on my body just stood up, because it was just such a moment, it's, it was, I can't explain it, but Officer Arland was there, please convey my thanks to PD for being so gracious. It was a wonderful experience for me, one I won't forget in a long time. And finally, a reminder that there's Sursa Trading tomorrow at eight o'clock for boards and commissions.
You stole my thunder. I'm kidding, no, 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 I'm kidding.
And I, I would like council, if they're available, to be there. You know, you can always do here something new. The laws change, and I think it would behoove us to be there. And finally, I just ask for your, I apologize for the mess-ups that I made tonight, you know, nobody knows the gravity of this seat that I'm sitting on, and I, my heart is 100% in this job, and I want to do the best job I possibly can, and sometimes I don't do that, and I apologize to my, no, I apologize to you all. Honest to God, before my two years is over, I will do it. So thank you, Steph. I know you're all such a great bunch of people to work with, it's, you've given more to me than I've given to you, and I appreciate, I really appreciate.
Right back at you.
Thank you. Hang in there, buddy, I'm, I'm going to get this done. All righty, reports by the city manager and city attorney.
Madam mayor and members of the council. Just a couple of very positive things that I wanted to share with the council that have happened over the last couple of weeks. So last week, there was a surprise inspection at Noah's Art from PACFA, and I'm happy to announce that they more or less passed with flying colors. There were a couple of minor issues that were identified, nothing that substantiates a finding or any kind of recourse or anything like that, minor things like base boards needing to be repainted, which, all of which have already been corrected, and we've provided that documentation to the state. We are down to about 25 animals, I think it's almost even split cats and dogs, so if anyone's looking for an animal, we have some great, great, you know, well-cared-for. So if anyone's looking for an animal, we have some great, great, you know, well-cared-for animals out there. We're also, our, our new kennels for the outside came in from Big R, and we've had those transported over. Our gas department, I want to give them a special thanks. They're going to lend their services to help with some welding to get those installed. And particularly as we go in the warm season, it's really, really going to make the animals' lives better. And just so proud of the efforts that Pam Briscoe and her staff are doing out there. It's, it's really, it's really just mind-blowing to think all the work they've done to get that facility open and running to its current status. We intend to keep it on as a city operation because of their success, and hopefully we can provide more resources as time goes on as well. And we'll keep you posted on adoption events and anything else that they're able to do. So very happy to see that. And on a very, very positive note, our wastewater treatment facility is being awarded the wastewater treatment facility of the year. So JV will be our contractor through Jacobs, Jeremy will be going up to Denver for a conference this weekend and accepting the award on our behalf. It's twofold. A big part of it is our efforts to maintain it and then, but also Jacobs' operation. One thing that was particularly highlighted is their program to mentor up and coming operators, which we're very happy to see. So we're, we're doing a very good job of training the rookies and the younger folks and, and the less experienced crew members out there in wastewater operations. And I feel very strongly we're in good hands and doing very well. So very excited to get that prestigious award. So that's it.
Okay. Madam Mayor, council members. I do want to say, just, you mentioned it, Mayor, but it's very exciting, this board commission training, because Sam Light from SIRSA is coming down and is going to be doing the majority of the training for us. And we have board commission training not too long ago, but it didn't involve Sam Light. And so for those of you who don't know him, he is the general counsel of SIRSA. And anyway, so he's going to be coming down and doing the majority of the training for the board and commissions, and it's at eight o'clock in space to create tomorrow morning. I don't know if, you touched on it, Mayor, but just to emphasize the point, the Temple Erin dedication is this Saturday.
Yes.
Okay, but yeah, absolutely. I just, I want to make sure.
Eleven AM.
Thank you. And the city has been trying to have a city cleanup.
Yeah.
But, but anyway, it's been kind of hard to do with the weather and doing that in anticipation of the event. The last thing I want to mention, and that is, this afternoon, right before the meeting, all of you received an email from Ms. Garrett that is asking, it's asking mayors to sign, right, to sign for, for your support for what they're calling partnership, not preemption. And it's kind of the remnants of the, of the pulling local control of zoning and land use away from local governments. And I just, I wanted to bring that to your attention. It's asking for mayor's signatures, but then down below it says only sign if you're elected official. So it may involve all of you. And that's just another way, I know that it's the end of March, and, you know, there is a lot of legislation out there, and I just don't know if you want to have Mike Beasley come down. I know I keep mentioning that, but it might be easy for council or easier if you decide just, and I, I haven't mentioned this to Steve when I see him multiple times a day, and you guys, you may want to do that just because it is getting kind of lately in the legislative session. But anyway, that is all I have, I believe.
When does the session end, June?
I don't know if this is the brief session, the abbreviated session?
I believe this is a 120-day session. I want to say it's early May.
Yeah.
Mayor, council, I have a correction. I misspoke. It wasn't Big R for the dog kennels, it was actually tractor supply. So make that clear.
Okay, item 11 is adjourned. Motion to adjourn?
Over.
Second?
Hi.
Devota?
Yes.
Yes, Shu?
Yes.
Berden?
Yes.
Royerson?
Yeah.
Hill?
Nobody loves you.